We'll call a meeting to order today. Any added items to the agenda? Mayor Dahl?
Madam Chair, just a note, not an added item, that Counselor Harper is on vacation and Counselor Duryea won't be able to attend due to a work commitment, perhaps late. So you can see on your agenda Counselor Duryea was chair and Counselor Overwater delightfully accepted the duty.
Okay, so I'll have a motion to accept the agenda. Counselor Bennett?
I move that we accept the agenda for Policy and Priorities Committee Agenda Monday, March 16, 2015, to be at 3:00 PM Council Chambers.
And all in favor? Carried. Page two of your agenda, minutes of the previous, where are we here? February 17th, could I get a motion for that? Counselor Bearshaw?
I move that the minutes from the February 17th, 2015 Committee of Council Policies and Priorities Meeting are presented, are approved, presented for approval. Changed the lingo on that one.
All in favor? Five of your agenda, any business arising from the minutes? Mayor Dahl?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I draw your attention to new business item 6A with regards to our business of the Olds and District Hospice Society, and I'd like to ask our C.O. if we have an update at all from the Mountain View County with regards to our matching funds.
I know that Mountain View County didn't meet on Wednesday last week, but I'm not sure whether they have approved or not.
So then, Mr. McGinnis, will you be checking out on that?
Yes, as soon as they've made a decision, I'll certainly make our council aware so we know whether we have to find the additional money or not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we do have a delegation, page six of your agenda, Spring Fling, Mr. Hugh Bodnar, and Mr. Beal. Does somebody want to introduce them? Mr. McGinnis?
Oh, both of these gentlemen need no introduction, I'm sure. Hugh and Brian, are you both going to come up to the microphone, or Hugh going to handle this himself?
He was going to start. I don't think he's back.
Okay, this is, oh, pardon me, sorry, didn't realize it was going to be that loud. Well, thank you for the opportunity to make a presentation to you on behalf of the Spring Fling Committee. This is a, our purpose here today is to seek council support for declaring April the 10th as Spring Fling Day in Olds, Alberta. And the reason for that is that through a series of meetings over the last, almost a year, a group has come together to create a very unique charitable concept where four charities have been chosen to receive the support of the community by way of ticket sales. The, kind of the proponents of this concept are the Olds, the Rotary Club, which Brian is representing here tonight, and myself with the Kiwanis Club. We have met over that period of time, and initially began with an initiative from the RCMP who had had an opportunity presented to them to host a traveling NHL alumni team. So it became apparent to me when I met with them that we couldn't do this by ourselves as a Kiwanis Club, so we needed the support of an organization like Rotary. And also to make it work, we needed media support. So we have the media partners of the local radio station, Brian and Melanie Hep, of course, Murray Elliott from the Albertan, and Dean Owen from Brass Media or Olds Community Television. So that was initially the group that got together, along with the Olds Grizzlies, because it originally started as a hockey concept. After careful consideration over the fall, we concluded that there was no way that, it was just too risky to have to sell, at that time, I think in the order of $25,000 worth of tickets, just to break even. And there was just no way that we felt that that was possible. So then we expanded the concept to think, you know, what other local groups, rather than spending $25,000 to go to Montreal, or wherever the alumni team was from, why not do an event that would benefit four local charities, or some charities? So it first became the Olds Grizzlies because they were involved in the hockey concept, and then over the period of, I say from November on, it started thinking, started to get legs. Well, why not expand and look at other groups? Then it became the Hospice Society. Then it became the O.R.E., which we all know as the Egg Society, they had a need for a community kitchen. And the last one that came on board was the Splash Park, because it was a relatively emerging concept that needed the support of the community. And so those are the four groups that will be the objects of the charitable donation. The mechanics are as follows, and we make no bones about it, this is a fundraiser. We're, we're creating, the tickets are $75 apiece, and all the money raised through the sale of tickets will go directly to the charities. And it will be distributed as follows, whoever gets the most votes, one ticket equals one vote. And there'll be four ballot boxes at the event, and you'll be allowed to vote. So whoever gets half, or 50% of the, of the votes, will get half the money. And there'll be three second place finishers, and they will each get the third of the remaining balance. So that's kind of the mechanics of how this is going to work. We think it's an important event for our community in terms of a unique way of raising money for a group of charities. Now, to get into a little more of the other mechanics, I'd like to turn it over to Brian. And one of the overriding kind of principles behind this is the notion of simplicity, and I'd like Brian to address that.
Good afternoon. The simplicity part has been a lot of fun, because all the groups, and again, we're getting almost tired of the word, but it's, it's kept us on a baseline. This isn't going to be a, actually, there's going to be no silent auction, no live auction. Our, our model is the old-fashioned cabaret. We're going to have live music, we're going to have some guest Nashville stars come in and play for us, we're going to have free food all night, the famous Fling Dog that I know you guys have been dying to hear about, our gourmet hot dog, but that'll be, that'll be free all night. It's not a sit-down dinner, it's starting at 7:00, ending at midnight-ish, that kind of thing. With your $75 ticket and your chance to vote, you get a free ticket for a beverage of choice. So, again, not really having a hard schedule where, sit down, stand up, come here, eat there. It's, the whole idea is just to come and relax, the snow's gone, it's springtime. See, and we're getting ready for it right now. So anyway, so that's sort of the, the main thing we're trying to create, each of the user groups, and as Hugh said, it's the one that gets the most vote, the people's vote, they get the lion's share, they get half, and everybody else shares. So it's, the whole concept's fun, each of those groups will be in a corner of the Cow Palace, so they can upsells, I think there's going to be some, maybe a dunk tank, mechanical bull in one corner, there's just going to be lots of fun. I heard there was belly dancers, too, so I mean, there's a little bit for everybody, you can wander around, you can sit and talk, you can have something to eat, and again, live music all night. So that's the concept of simplicity, every time we got off track, we just sort of kept, kept back saying, you know, what's going to work for everyone? What's going to work for us? We're keeping our expenses really, really low, and just sort of aiming for that great successful annual night. So this is the first, in our mind, Spring Fling 2015, and we hope we'll just keep going each year, have it get bigger and better, and a lot of fun.
Thanks, Brian, is there any questions?
Mayor Dahl?
Yes, thank you. That sounds really fun. I, I most certainly would encourage my colleague, council members, to purchase tickets and attend, this is the first, I hope, annual. I do notice that we have the Olds Regional Exhibition and Olds Grizzly reps here, would they like to share at all what they're going to do? I know you just shared a little bit about belly dancing and other things for excitement, or is it going to be a surprise?
Tammy?
We hope to keep some elements of surprise, for sure.
I just would like to reiterate what a unique and interesting concept this is going to be, and how much we appreciate the leadership of Rotary and Kiwanis, again, demonstrating in our community the power of collaboration and partnership.
Thank you.
Joel, do you want to talk about what the Grizzlies have in mind?
We, we're just going to do a hockey thing, kind of a shoot to win on the net in one of the corners, and we're also providing a lot of the support as far as security, 50-50 system, that kind of thing. But yeah, we're just, we're just here to support, we know we're getting, we're going to benefit from this financially, so, which we need really bad, so we're, we kind of approach it from our end as, whatever you guys need for help, we'll provide, and that's, that's our contribution, so.
Thanks, Joel. Judy, Supple?
Thank you. Then I would just finally close with my council members, that if you so choose not to belly dance, you might want to just fling a hockey puck into the net, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Any other comments from council? No?
One concluding thing I would say, the four charities, it's incumbent upon them to sell.
Yeah.
Because in their best interest, because presumably whoever they sell the ticket to is likely going to vote for them. But it's still a secret ballot, there'll still be four ballot boxes that, when you come in, you can either hand your proxy in, or vote in person. That one ticket, one vote, that's the overriding principle.
That's right. Oh, Counselor Bearshaw?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one question. It's a tremendous thing, and I'm excited to go, I got my ticket sold to me.
Right.
By my council colleague here, I didn't realize there's any pressure to vote for her, she hasn't given me any pressure to vote for her cause yet or not, but I'm sure she will. But has there been any thought to, and I'm sure there has been, to how you're going to manage how it goes? Because the first group gets a lot of money, and then the other groups get a significant amount, but considerably less. Is there, is there been, is there any worries, or is it just, as to how that's all going to go down, so there's no animosity, or shenanigans, or anything like that? I'm just curious.
The four charities in this case, all agree to that principle upfront. That was a, the simplicity factor was introduced, and try, rather than trying to come up with some proportional system or something, this seemed to be the most beneficial for everybody, because it provides an incentive to the charities to, you know, to sell.
Yeah.
So, and this will only be good as, as the number of tickets are sold.
Thanks, Hugh. I think this is a great event, and I would encourage all council to be involved in that, I think it'll be fun. Could I have a motion for acceptance? And Mr. McGinnis, to, to bring it back, okay, very good.
Thank you. Yes, I would like to move to thank you for your presentation today, and further direct our administration, our C.O. to bring back to council a proclamation to consider Friday, April 10th, Spring Fling in Olds, as well, as I noticed that there is a request for some donation here as well, a monetary donation.
Well, that may or may not come forward yet, we're still, still, we haven't made the formal application.
Okay, okay, well then I'll, I won't be able to move that portion, then I will ask C.O. to bring back the proclamation. If that gets back to our council agenda, then it'll have to go through the process of our policy, donation policy.
Thank you, council, and we look forward to seeing you on the event, and help us sell tickets.
Question? Mr. McGinnis?
Maybe Hugh, you can just talk about, personally, the funnest thing to this point has been the stuff that's been on Facebook, so Olds, Spring Fling, there's, it's been incredible work. If you want to know what the various organizations are pitching, they've all done a little video, and it's very, very well done. So who's ever behind that, they, they need kudos as well.
Just have to thank Mr. OCTV, Dean Owen.
Thank you.
Dean, do you want to show that?
How long?
Forty seconds or something?
Okay, good.
Or sums it up in a nutshell? Yeah.
Thank you.
Did it come up on your monitor at all?
That's it. The longer versions are on the website. And also listen to the radio, of course, and watch in the, on the Olds Albertan. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you. Carrying on to page eight of your agenda, Mountain View Emergency Shelter Society Land Lease, Roberta Hammer and Mr. Phillips.
Just you.
Oh, just you, okay, thanks.
Hello, thank you for having me here. So Bob Phillips, he's our chairman of our board. Am I not speaking?
Okay, is it, okay?
Yeah.
Bob Phillips gives his apologies, he's on the road with work, so he was unable to come today. So I am here with a completed lease agreement with Mountain View Emergency Shelter in the Town of Olds, it's for the land lease. I have with me some copies of our tentative site plan and our tentative floor plan, so if anybody's interested, I can circulate those.
I think there's about seven offices, so that's the proposal.
I can give you a brief rundown on where we're at with the shelter if you'd like, or I can just open the floor to questions.
Yeah, give us an overview, that would be good, Roberta, and then after that, we'll have questions, I'm sure. Thank you.
Mountain View Emergency Shelter Society was formerly Olds Emergency Shelter Society. Just this past February, we got word that our name change had, had gone through. We, for some time, have thought that we probably should have gone with that name to begin with, we will be a regional service, and so that was behind the reason for the name change. We have been working on a variety of different aspects of the shelter. One of the main focuses has been this land lease with the town. We've been working on it, I would think, for about a year with your C.O., Norm, and we had a lawyer, and you had a lawyer, and so I think that we've come up with a lease agreement that is amenable to both parties, very fair in our perspective, I'm hoping the town feels the same way. It gives us the land for 30 years with the option of two 10-year renewals, and it's a donated lease, so that helps us immensely. We are looking at starting some programming this summer, hopefully as early as this summer. We have some funding from FCSS, from the county and the Town of Olds, and we're hoping to run a variety of groups, that's just still in, in the works, we're trying to find facilitators and sort of nail down a few things with that. As far as offering shelter, we've toyed with the idea that we could put victims up in temporary shelter arrangements such as hotels, that, that happens extensively in the province, because about two-thirds of shelter requests are not able to be accommodated, so people needing shelter are put in hotels around the province anyway, and we've thought we might attempt to do that. We're not quite ready to, to start doing that, but that's one of the things we're looking at. We will now start a capital fundraising campaign, we are going to have to raise in the vicinity of probably three-quarters of a million dollars yet before we can start construction, so we are quite, I would think we're a couple of years from, two to three years from the shelter doors being opened, so the hotel option is one of the things we're looking We, on the, the building plan, you see a three-story building, that's still up in the air. What we would like to do ideally is have a three-story building, so the first floor would be the offices, the counseling space, the intake space, and a bachelor suite, which would be for male people attending the shelter, either teenage boys, or, you know, if they're little boys, they can be in the room with their mom, but if they're probably, say, 12 years of age on, they need to be separated from the main shelter. And then also if we have single dads coming in, or men needing shelter. It's an emergency shelter, not a domestic, not necessarily a domestic violence shelter. Many shelters in the province are emergency shelters, but they end up, the priority goes to those whose lives are at risk, and no doubt ours will end up being predominantly filled by people who are in, at risk, so are in domestic violence situations. But there is the possibility that there's just homeless people in the community, we have a bed, we can put them up there overnight till we can get them into a city. We have very little transportation in the community now, there's no Greyhound bus, there's, or well, there is at 1:00 in the morning, so we often are having to accommodate homeless people in this community as well overnight till we can get them to the city. So the first floor would be for the male people that are in attendance at our shelter, and our intake and our counseling rooms. The second floor would be the actual shelter for predominantly women and children. And then the third floor is what we call transitional or second-stage housing, and that's where, I think it's got three, I haven't looked at it for a while, but we've talked about two or three apartments where the, typically women and her children could go into that for a six-month to a one-year lease. Shelters tend, the provincial funding allows people to stay in a shelter for three weeks. Many of the shelters in the province have fundraised, and so they're able to extend the stay for a woman until we, they can get her into a safe place, but three weeks is the provincial funding limit, and then where does she go? So the transitional housing is available in Edmonton and Calgary, but it's, it's a huge, huge need, so ideally, we could provide a couple of transitional apartments, but I'm not sure, that will be our last priority. We will get the shelter up and running first, and if we can afford to build the third floor, we will, but if we can't, we'll, we'll stick to a two-story. So.
Okay, council questions, Mayor Dahl?
Thank you very much, Hugh. The Chair, you noted briefly the difference between emergency shelter and shelter, like victim services. Can you just run that by me one more time?
Well, most, several shelters in the province are emergency shelters versus women's shelters, right? So I'll just put my own victim services hat on, when we would have a client, it would say it was a woman, we would be looking for shelter for her, and we could look at any of the shelters, and if she was in a domestic violence situation, then her safety is at risk, so she has priority over a homeless person that may not be in a domestic violence situation. But you have both types of clients that need shelter, right? So ours is an emergency shelter, because in Olds, our experience with victim services was we do have homeless people on occasion in this community that need shelter. And what, what we were not, we used to, we used to bundle them up in a car with victim services advocates, and they would drive them to the city, but a lot of times, that's not the safest choice for the advocates, because maybe they've been drinking or doing drugs, maybe, maybe the roads aren't good, and so in those kinds of situations, we would have put them on the bus, but we don't have a bus except for in the wee hours of the morning now, so that's really difficult, and there's very limited taxi in Olds as well, and that's very expensive. So it would be ideal if we could put them up in our shelter, because traditionally, the last few years, the victim services was putting them up in a hotel.
Okay. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you for that excellent presentation. I just have one question, do you have volunteers who drive your clients where they need to go the following day, or, you know, is there a need for that travel?
My, my history was with victim services, I haven't been with victim services for a year now. Victim services may transport them the next day, or a taxi, or a bus. The shelter group isn't operational right now, we're hoping to become operational, and we will be partnered very closely with victim services. I don't know how much utilization of volunteers we will have in the actual operation of the shelter, I suspect it will be predominantly paid positions.
Any further questions? No? Okay, I guess we should have a motion to use this for information? Oh, okay.
Just one more question, in the agreement, it does state commencement date was January 1st, 2015, is that just the, for the lease? For the actual paperwork?
Yeah, and we will probably change that, hey, Norm, I would expect.
One of the things that the, the organization has spoken with the town is, in order for them to start their fundraising in earnest, they needed a lease agreement in place so that the funders knew that this was, they had a place to put the building, so that was one of them. So yeah, the build may be two or three years out, but the ability to fundraise was contingent upon having a lease agreement, so.
And supplemental, Mr. McGinnis, would that in term continue then, for, starting with a 30-year term?
So the 30-year term will be from the commencement date. There's also some language in the, the lease as well, as if the society is not able to raise funds and build the building, we're not held to that 30-year lease, that there is a mechanism for us to get out of the lease if, if the fundraising doesn't go well.
Counselor Bearshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, Roberta, do you have, how much money do you have to fundraise?
Right now, our bank account is sitting at approximately $140,000, and that's with, without being able to do any capital, serious capital fundraising, some of that is tied to our operating plans, but I think we're looking at a probab, I, I wish Bill was here, he was, he was going to come, and I don't know what happened to him. Bill Johnston's our building chairperson, our building committee chairperson, he could give you a more accurate estimate, but we're looking at about an $800,000 build, and so I'm thinking we are going to need to raise 700, 750,000 at this point.
So, and I'm more or less just curious, in the community, you're, you and your people are going to be in charge of raising all, all of those funds?
That's right. We, we are looking, we, we're looking beyond the community extensively, there's a lot of foundations out there that fund this sort of thing, there's, and we've already made some of those contacts, just, some of the contacts that we've already made are like the Barbara Green Foundation, the Flammen Foundation, I think it's Mary Kay Cosmetics, there's, I can't re, it's a cosmetic company. There's some foundations out there that have fairly large gifts for domestic violence-related projects. So we're able to look outside the scope of this community, and we also have changed our name to Mountain View Emergency Shelter Society, so that we can go outside of Olds, too, right?
So, just supplemental to that, so what do you think at the end of, at the end of, when the build is finally completed, what your operating expenses are, and how much of that would be covered by government funding, and how much would be responsible to, has there been any thought to that, and how much is you responsible to fundraise?
Oh, yeah, we've looked at that, we're, we're, one of the ones we've looked at closely is, well, we look at, we've looked closely at Strathmore, and we're looking closely at Red Deer. Red Deer is significantly larger than us, I would say, I would almost venture a guess to say Red Deer will be 10 times the size that we are, and what they have to do each year is raise, in addition to their government funding, they have to raise about a half a million dollars to keep their doors open. have to raise about a half a million dollars to keep their doors open and to operate the way they do. Strathmore is probably two and a half times what we are planning to build, and they have to raise a couple hundred thousand each year. But we also have to secure provincial operating dollars. Like, they, it isn't a given that they will give us a grant for shelter. It's through Child and Family Services, and it's something that we will have to, there's a lot of things that we have to do, but, you know, one step at a time, so.
So, Roberta, have you gone around to the other communities, like the other municipalities within our county? Are you doing, are you going to do a presentation to them, sort of requesting maybe funds to go towards this shelter? Because probably, most of the people that will end up in this shelter would not necessarily be people from Olds, right? It would be surrounding. So is that part of your initiative?
Eventually, yeah. We just needed this step done before we, we have all kinds, we do have lots of plans of things that we're going to be doing, for sure. Yeah.
Any further questions? Administration? No? So then, I guess we should have a motion to bring it back to counsel for request for decision, correct? Okay, could I have that? Counselor Walsh?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. I was wondering why the lease was so long, but two lawyers involved, I guess that explains it. But I move that the lease for the Mountain View Emergency Shelter Society be brought back to the next council meeting.
All right. On, oh?
I will answer Counselor, Counselor Walsh's question. We had a lot of discussion around the length, and the way that it's structured is the useful life of the building is deemed to be fifty years. So at the end of the fifty years, there'll be no useful life left in the building, and no need with this, this lease to tie the land up any longer. So there was a lot of discussion around how we are fair with the society for their investment in the building, but not sell them the land, still keep the interest in the land. So this is where we ended up, to try and structure the lease so that it used the entire useful life of the building.
Any further comments? All right, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor? Carrie? Thank you, Roberta. That was a very good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, counsel, moving on to page thirty-two of your agenda. Splash Park, I believe that is Mr. Wegstah.
I think when we closed out the Spring Fling, one of them closed their mind as well. That's okay, I can find it. Just as a review, a quick background to, you know, what brought us here to this point today in, in the Splash Park development. It began a number of years ago with, first, the concept plan that was provided to the town that outlined both a splash park and a skate park in Centennial Park. And those two facilities were together going to promote a positive youth recreation and community interaction for a wide variety of age ranges. Of course, at that point in time, the town, with a community group, had spearheaded the skate park and saw that become a reality. Since that point in time, there was also the Mountain View Regional Parks Recreation and Cultural Master Plan, which also had highlighted consideration for a spray or water park in a five-to-ten-year timeframe for some consideration to be given to that as a, and had identified it as a core community project. And that's defined, you know, in that part of that master plan, as the projects that both the county and the local jurisdiction with the town identify together as projects that are potentially to be worked on together. Then more recently, we, you know, we moved forward a number of years, and the Olds Open Spaces and Trails Master Plan that the council has adopted had also cited some recommendations regarding consideration for a water spray park. And that was derived out of a number of things. But, you know, historically, we, that, that master plan did take a survey, as well as, you know, looked into some visioning engagements it did with the community. And the Splash Park did rise, you know, to the top of a handful of amenities that we should consider. This past summer, we, we engaged a number of community members that were showing an interest, provided some support from one of our community facilitators. And out of that did evolve the Old Splash Park Association. And they are a committed group that is very motivated to, you know, see, see through a vision of a splash park placed in Centennial Park. Again, counsel has provided general support for the development of a water play center in Centennial Park, identifying that location formally, if such a project were to proceed. And counsel did provide the Old Splash Park Association support in principle for its applications and grant applications. Just where we are today, the Old Splash Park Association fundraising, as of last week, speaking with their treasurer, they were able to provide where they are, and there's three categories. So the, the cash that they have actually collected, minus any expenses that they have been incurring to this point in time, they have eighty thousand, just over eighty thousand dollars in the bank that they have collected. Next to that, then, they have, in kind, have signed pledges for sixty-four thousand dollars worth of in-kind work, you know, from local, local companies that are going to be part of a construction that they've committed to. And then they have a hundred and ninety-one thousand, just over a hundred and ninety-one thousand of pledges that they have, that they have not yet collected the cash, and they are in different stages of, of collecting that. But that is individuals or corporations that have pledged different levels of support for them and made those commitments. So they are in the progress of turning the light blue at the top into the dark blue on the bottom. And that's where they are at today. So this is where they have remaining. They have an in-kind donation of sixty-four thousand, and the pledges. The Park and Play budget, which went out for RFP, was, came back at $550,000, plus a budgeting $75,000 for in-kind, meaning that at this point in time, the association, assuming what is in blue, which we'll come back to, the association making that assumption, would still have $38,000 in fundraising to go. And just to let you know where they are at with that, as you heard earlier from the Spring Fling, they are one of the groups that's participating in Spring Fling. So they are committed to continuing that fundraising commitment. They have also secured the Mountain View Power, they're working with a fundraiser with Mountain View Power to sign up a hundred, one hundred new customers for Mountain View Power. And they do currently have an application in for the Community Facility Enhancement Program with the Government of Alberta. Leads us to operating. If such a park were to be constructed, what would be the operating ongoing budgetary impact for the Town of Olds? This chart here is a combination of some things. Park and Play, as part of the RFP, they were required to provide, well, all proponents were required to provide, estimates on, on operations moving forward. So they did provide a number of things that would be taken into consideration regarding water usage, the amount of water usage, chemical usage, that their proposed system would require. With that, we have done a calculation of $589 per cube. That's the cost that we charge the pool for water. So equivalent to what the charges would be for an operation of a spray park. We used what is charged through to the pool. And it's based on sixteen weeks of operation. The largest component, then the next ones that are blank in the first two columns, they're blank because that was not included in their estimations. Their, meaning Park and Play, or any other of the proponents that we received RFP's back, did not include any of these type of ongoing costs. So we have been speaking with some of our fellow municipalities that do have, do have water parks. Tabor is a good example. They just opened one up that will be very similar in size and, and construction as to the one that's being proposed in, by Park and Play. It was also designed and constructed by Park and Play, so it would be a good representative. But also talking with Three Hills, which has a smaller spray park than the one that's being proposed. We have, at this point in time, estimated these types of, of numbers. Again, Tabor only had one season in, so its numbers are, they're not quite sure yet, but they could share with us where, you know, roughly what, what sort of costs they were. One of the things that we'd want to ensure that we do moving forward is if such a project were to be constructed, that, that not ignoring the fact that there will be required annual maintenance to it, that we don't foresee. We know that the, such parks are built, constructed well, but we always know that there's going to be something that's going to come up. It might be around one of the, one of the items that Park and Play has provided, or it may be around the cement, or it might be around the groundwork works immediately around it. So considering that moving forward, we've also indicated, you know, from both Three Hills and Tabor, that there are some contracted services you'll want to ensure you're budgeting for on an annual basis. Just a little bit of consulting that might either be from the, the proponent that built it, or it might be for some other electrical or that type of work that you'll need to ensure that there's a little bit. As you can see, with $600, that's not, not a lot. Utilities, estimated cost of actually functioning, the pumps, the power, and such. The large cost is labor. That's a fixed, it may not be an increased cost, because we currently have that labor, but that's dedicated when we create a budget center for the, for a splash park, if, if we build one. We would attribute a certain amount of our, our percentage of our labor that goes into maintaining that. And of course, there's be a percentage of an FTE, but roughly estimating about $21,000, you know, from what Three Hills and Tabor has estimated that they put towards labor costs that they attribute to the splash park. So that would be an annual operating budgetary impact moving forward if we were to move forward with such a, such a project. Estimated about $35,000. The numbers, just to, to verify, the numbers that, that this company had provided as far as the amount of product that was going through, the amount of water that was going through, they have that well-regulated. It was consistent with the other bid that we did see. It's also been consistent to, you know, speaking with the other municipalities that are running ones. They have that down pretty succinctly as far as the flow-through of what it will take for water and, and chemical. Just to review the process of, again, what brought us here today, the Mountain View Regional Parks Recreation and Culture Master Plan does speak to identifying core community projects through master plans. That has been done with this, this project, as was cited earlier. It has been cited on several different documents where, where the spray park would, would emerge as one of the handful at the top. And the, that regional master plan also does talk to what costs would be shared between the local jurisdiction, the Town of Olds and the county. And it has suggested in there, following a seventy-two percent Town of Olds and twenty-eight percent County Mountain View. And until there's another MOA between the county and the town, that's the formula that we have been working with the county on any potential funding sharing between the two Being that we are the primary jurisdiction in this core community project, Olds will own the splash park. We would handle the construction contract and any liabilities associated with that, as well as the ongoing operating costs. The Old Splash Park Association is requesting $250,000 from municipality financing, being both the town and the county, in support of the construction of a capital project. A key core community project would break down to seventy-two percent. Our contribution to the Town of Olds would be $180,000, and the County Mountain View being $70,000. The schedule itself, if we were to work our way back, the Old Splash Park Association has been working towards their premise that they would like to see this built and open for Canada Day 2015. And if we work our way back, that leads us to the next couple of weeks with both the County of Mountain View County Council and yourselves as a council, considering any financial piece that may move forward. That's our update for now. And certainly, we, as administration, we'd be looking for direction as to any recommendations that you'd like to see, you know, not specifically, but whether or not you'd like to see a recommendation of moving forward with construction and/or financing.
Okay. Counsel? Any questions? Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Doug. That was a good update. I'm curious that you based thirty-five hours per week and what the other parks were doing, because I'm assuming that it should be seven days per week, certain number of hours per day, particularly in the summer months.
Again, that, again, that was calculations that the spray park, or this Park and Play had provided for us. So they are looking at, as they provided, as I understand it, it was about an average of how, how much it would be open and how much it would be functioning based on, on their expertise.
Any other further questions? Mayor Dahl?
Maybe, I hope I'm not repeating anything here. However, I do recall that there was some proposal ask of having some staffing available with regards to the park, Splash Park. Would that be over and above the, the ask for dollars?
That would be within the operating. So we, again, you know, talking with Tabor and Three Hills, and also with what Park and Play had provided of required staffing, it looks like a contingent of, a cost of about $21,000 per year. So it, it did range, and that would certainly depend from year to year and how much at the start of a startup. But for a budgeting purpose, how much would we allocate to that operation function, as we do with all of our functions, and allocate a percentage of the labor cost to that function area? So it has ranged, as we can tell, somewhere in that twenty to thirty thousand of what other municipalities are, are allocating, saying that they put in labor resources to support splash parks.
Counselor Walsh?
Yeah, just looking at the numbers, to be honest, I'd be pretty nervous pulling the trigger within the next fifteen days, based on a hundred and ninety-one thousand in pledges. I don't know what percentage we'd want to see in cash before we even make that decision, but that, that would be a prime question in my mind before saying that by the end of the month, we're going to start ordering equipment to put in for, for spring.
And that message has been carried forward to the association, indicating that closing that gap over the next week is paramount for each of the councils to understand that, that they carry the risk, and we carry the risk as the town by signing that contract. But the more that they can convert into cash over the next, and the last meeting was last Wednesday and a half ago. To give you some perspective there, it went from fifty thousand to eighty thousand from the week that they met till the ninth, so. they met till the 9th, so, from the 3rd to the 9th, they had closed that much of their pledges into cash, so, they're moving, you know, moving forward, and so they've heard that as well, that they need to close that off.
Is that good, Counselor Walsh? So, am I, am I to understand then, that the operation of that would be supported by Mountain View County and the Town of ODS, but would the Mountain View County's portion be already, or already in their recreation amount that they give to us, or are they gonna add more to it to give to us?
You're correct in your, in your first part of the statement, that the operational cost would be from, there would be no additional money coming from the county for the operations of a splash park, that it would be included in our, our regular recreation funding that we receive from them, and then how we allocate that into what we're doing in recreation.
That is interesting. Any further comments? Are we looking to, Mr. McGinnis, are we looking to bring this back to council, or what do we do?
Yeah, so, there'll be a presentation by the association a week from today, and in order for the timelines that Doug has suggested, then, they need a decision from Town Council on the 23rd and from County Council on the 25th. Now, my understanding is, did go to County Council last week, but it was deferred till the 25th, because they had three councillors that were not at the meeting last week.
Mr. Wagstaff?
If council is receptive, they could direct administration to provide a recommendation on the construction and financing of the Old Splash Park, that would provide specific financial information of how the town could go about funding it, if, if they were to do so, and then we would be able to provide any updated information from the association with regards to their bank account of pledges to cash.
So it is my understanding then, this would come back as a request for a decision on the 23rd for financing? That's the request?
If that's the wish of council, they could direct us, as administration, to provide a recommendation on the construction and financing.
Okay. Counsel, do you have further comments? Or, Mayor Dahl?
I would recommend that a council receive that information, it would be pretty much a priority for us to see that with the presentation or before.
So you're requesting we see the presentation before the request for decision? No?
No, I'm, I'm asking Mr. Wagstaff if he could supply that information to council with regards to the dollars and cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this is to CAO McGinnis, but what sort of a budget implication would it have for us? I know, if I remember correctly, was there some money kind of set aside or earmarked for the Splash Park at one time? We talked about it.
No, we'd have to increase our tax rate by the equivalent amount before we do our tax rate bylaw in April.
Okay, any further comments? Do we need a motion for this, Mr. McGinnis?
No, my question is, it's in the presentation, that have they made arrangements to come through legislative services yet? It says March 23rd here?
Yeah, it'd be helpful to have a recommendation to bring it forward to the March 23rd council meeting.
Okay, I so moved then, that our CAO and administration prepare a request for decision for March 23rd.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, any further discussion? Okay, we'll have the vote, all in favor? Carrie? That looks like it sort of concludes our meeting today, we have a question and answer period. Does anybody have? Nope? All right, so we can have a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn? Counselor Walsh, all in favor? Thank you.